has been wearing the mask of nonbees. This evening, we will start with the reorganizational meeting and then we'll move right into the regular school board voting meeting for December. As we begin this evening, I'll decide over the meeting will elect a temporary president, and then that person will accept nominations for the president once we have our president in place, and then I'll turn the meeting over to the new president, and then we'll elect our committees as we move forward. Tammy, at this time, can you do a roll call for the whole group of members, please?
Carrie Armabas?
She's not here, Tammy.
Okay. Megan Drayer?
Here.
Diane Page?
Here.
Corey Sherman?
Here.
Janine Stumpf?
Here.
That's you, Tammy. Now it's time to recognize the newly elected members from St. Peterburg Borough. We do have Mr. Brady Fight. Remember that borough, we have Mr. Jeff Powell, Hube Township, Armstrong County, we have Eric Suttonley, and the reelected Perry Township school board member is Mrs. Kelly Toiler. Okay, at this time, I'll open up the nominations for a temporary president. Keep in mind, the president has to be a whole group of members.
I nominate Corey Sherman.
Corey Sherman, are there other nominations at this time? Carrie Dunn, all those in favor for Corey Sherman to be the temporary president, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Corey, I'll turn it over to you to elect your new president.
All right. Moving on down, we need to nominate an elected president for the board for 2022. Our former president, Jen Fight, so open up her nominations.
I nominate, you have a vote here? A second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And before we get moving, we'll have to-
May I just stay here?
No, you got to sit up here. Before we move into the other committees, we're going to have to have Tammy administer the oath to the newly elected.
Sorry, I'm going to move on my job.
You're most amiable, Tammy.
Okay.
At this time, we will have Tammy do the administration of the oath to the reelected and newly elected members.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to stand Brady Fight, Jeff Powell, Eric Suttonley, Kelly Toiler, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that you will discharge the duties of your office with fidelity?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Tammy.
Kelly, can I ask you when they're doing their nominations, if they could say who's making the motion and who's seconding it for manhood?
Yes, I was going to ask you if you needed that done, so you could hear.
Yes, that would be great, quickly, Tammy.
Okay, we will do that. Okay, so the next motion we need is to fill the position of vice president for the next term. Do I have any motions for vice president or nominations?
I nominate Carrie Armabas.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, all in very favor, Carrie Armabas, and did you hear who that was, Tammy, first and second?
I did hear the first, second I heard Corey Sherman.
Okay, Janine was the first one.
All right, thanks.
Corey was second. Hey, you're just about to be-
Congratulations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two way now.
Okay, Carrie, you're now the vice president.
That's what I did.
We also need to elect a treasurer for the new term. Mr. Mark Rattell is no longer on the board, so I need a nomination for treasurer for 2022.
I nominate Megan Drayer.
Second.
Okay, that was first by Corey and second by Carrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. Megan, you are a new treasurer.
Oh.
And we just want to acknowledge that Tammy Thompson is our board secretary, and she holds that position until July 1st of 2025. So we have all the new positions. Now we need to look at some of our appointments. Legislative chairperson, I have that position, I don't mind keeping it unless somebody else wants to step up to the plate. No? Okay, we need a motion?
I'll motion, here's Corey.
Okay, you're second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
That was in a favor or opposed?
In favor.
Oh, thank you, okay. Motion carries then. Lena was our IU representative, so we need another IU representative. If you have any motions or anyone interested in being the IU representative. I believe they meet on Wednesdays evenings. Isn't that right, David? I heard they were meeting on Wednesdays.
I don't like to do that.
Carrie?
I will.
Okay, so we have a motion for, I'll make a motion.
I'll motion Carrie Armabas.
Okay.
Second.
Hey, Tammy, so Jeff Powell was the first motion, Corey Sherman was the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Carrie. You can also call in, I think, will you be Carrie, or do you need to say for the other ones? Okay. Okay, the crew center representative, we actually have two. Janine is our first, Corey is our second, Diane is actually in Albertit. Anybody want to change any of that? You guys still okay with keeping those positions?
Yep.
Okay, so we need a motion to keep those positions where they are?
I'm looking.
Okay.
My second.
Okay, so Brady was first, Jeff was second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we have a PSBA cabinet representative, which was Lena. That person is kind of the go-between between us and anything the School Board Association puts out, just kind of keeps us updated. We have somebody who's interested in that position. Want everybody to run at once. I can do that if nobody else is interested?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Corey makes the motion?
I'll second that.
Carrie seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next, we have some committees that worked for really here. You can see listed there who's on the technology committee. It would be nice to have another board member on the committee. It was usually I and Jen who was there, so another board member who'd be interested in joining on the tech committee.
I will do that.
Okay, and it's fine, you can have more than that. So Diane, do you like to? And both Diane and Jeff. And I don't think we need motions for that because this is just a committee, right there. Okay, well, we'll make a motion in case, just in case, to be safe. So can I have a motion in favor or to put on the table Diane and Jeff being added to the tech committee? Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Did we lose everybody?
We lost, uh, me.
Okay. Tammy, did you hear who made those motions?
I heard Corey Sherman made the second motion, and Jen Fight is still on there, will she remain on there?
No, she will be off, she's, yes, she still is on that list. No, Jen will not be on, well, Jen could still be on there, I don't know if she's interested or not as a community member. So I guess we need to check on that.
I'm going to make this call, Tammy will be called first.
If you would like, I'll do it. Would you like to stay on, Jen? I didn't see you over there. That would be great, so we'll keep Jen on.
There, Megan. Yeah, okay. You hear us, Megan?
Are you good?
Can you hear us, Megan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tammy, that was seconded by Brady.
Oh, okay, who made the first on that?
Corey.
Corey made the first and Brady seconded, okay.
Correct. And did you hear Jenny is staying on the committee?
Yes, I did hear that.
Okay, good, all right. Next, we have the athletic committee. You can see the members that are on there. Do we have anyone that would be interested in joining the athletic committee, or we want to just keep it what it is?
I am.
Okay. So we have a motion to add Diane.
Do you need to take Lena off?
Yes, we will take Lena off and add Diane.
And we'll replace Dr. Matolio with Dave Sherman?
Yes. So we needed motion for removing Lena and Scott Matolio and adding Dave Sherman and Diane Page.
Make the motion, Janine.
Second, Corey.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hey, motion carries. And finally, we have a finance committee, so we'll be removing Mr. Mark Rattell from that.
Kelly, I'm going to remove myself as well, I couldn't pick Lena.
You want to be off that, Corey?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could leave Emmy on there, I was only here with her, but I'm going to add Andrea.
Okay, we're going to add Andrea. It's kind of, you guys just picked random, were you meeting every, on Tuesdays?
We did for just about nine months, and then now it's more of an add-on committee. Probably once we get into the budget, we'll be needing to do this one periodically to review something online, so it'd be great to have you work.
You interested, Brady? Awesome. Okay, so we need a motion now to approve the new finance committee, which would be Megan, Brady, Emmy, Dr. McDivitt, and Andrea.
Make the motion, this is Diane.
And we have a first, a second.
A second, and a second.
Jeff Powell, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so now we have our committees completed for the next year. All right, so the next item on the agenda, just look at the school board meeting dates as attached. As David explained, you have two options. First one is just to have one meeting, which includes the workshop and the voting meeting on one night. That would be attachment A, in your packet. Attachment B is to continue what we did this past year, which was having a virtual meeting second Monday, and usually we do that, like you said, it's virtual, and then the regular board meeting will be the third Monday, except for the exceptions that are on in June and December. Any discussion you want to have before we?
I will just say that, you know, going through a year of having the workshop and the voting meeting in the same night, we just don't have enough time. I don't feel we always have enough time to be fully informed on things before we vote, and I think we all found ourselves in situations where, had we had more time, we would have voted differently. I think that the habit of virtual, it's not bad because we're known as virtual, we have a little more time to digest things before we vote on them, that's my personal opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we need a motion for one of the attachments.
I'll make a motion to approve attachment B, separate board drop.
My second. Okay, so Tammy does, Corey Sherman making the motion, and Carrie was the second for attachment B, which is having two meetings a month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so we got that set for next year. Okay, so at this time, we're going to adjourn the reorganizational meeting, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move adjourn.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. We need to move into the actual meeting itself, so we need to have our pledge to leave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, who sustains my nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all. Do you want to have another silence? Okay, Tammy, would you like to do the roll call?
Carrie Armabas?
Here.
Megan Drayer?
Here.
Brady Fight?
Here.
Diane Page?
Here.
Jeff Powell?
Here.
Corey Sherman?
Here.
Janine Stumpf?
Here.
Eric Suttonley?
Here.
Kelly Toiler?
Here.
Okay, at this time, we have some public participation, and I see we have Mike Wyler on the list to discuss the marching band co-op with Union School.
Good evening, my name is Mike Wyler, I'm from the City Park. I'd like to take the moment to just give, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening, very much appreciated. I'd also like to welcome the new board members, welcome back returning board members. Thanks, Jen, for our years of service, very much appreciated, and your efforts are appreciated. This evening, I'd like to discuss and bring to light some concerns with the status of the AC Valley marching. I want to tell you what I'm about to describe to you is in no way an attack on our current band director. Firstly, quick story. I thought Coach Laramore was going to be here tonight, so I was just going to be able to point to him, but he didn't make it, so. Coach Lane Laramore is one of our baseball coaches. Coach Laramore and I have been coaching a combined AC Valley-Carnet City baseball team, hosted by Carnet City. It's a summer baseball team for about the last five years. For those of us outside of that area, we've only heard rumors and the stories about the heated rivalry between Carnet City and Montauk. Coaching Carnet City baseball team against a team from Montauk has been an eye-opener for me, and let me tell you, that rivalry is real, and it's intense. Trust me, I want to tell you that it gets heated, and there's absolutely zero love in that relationship, at least between the two parties. It's kind of cool. This past weekend, at the Butler City Christmas parade in downtown Butler, a miracle happened. Carnet City and Montauk marching bands united, combined, and marched together in the Butler City Christmas parade. If you know the history, that's, in my mind, that's a big milestone for those two organizations to come together and work. It was such a big achievement, it even made the local newspaper, if you follow the ball really. This fall's been a really good one at AC Valley, if you're a high school football fan. The Friday night lights were spectacular this year, everybody involved. Our AC Valley marching band, out of total of 12 kids this year, participated. There are many reasons and explanations and excuses as to why that turnout was so low. The kids put in a lot of work, kept their heads held high, and did a great job all year throughout the entire football season. Now the downside. There were only a few Friday nights when the entire group of band participants were able to be there and participate. There are many reasons, vacations, illnesses, school quarantine, COVID, just saying a few. At times, the band was able to perform with a partial group. Then there were times when the numbers were too low, and unfortunately, unfortunately, the kids had to stand in stands. Unfortunately, the latter happened during our football playoff games, where the team made a deep run into the playoffs. This included two home football games at Union, and a District 9 championship game held at Claremont University. It's very unfortunate for many reasons. The main reason being, when will they ever have a chance to do that again? That story shouldn't be told. The football teams return a lot of talent, and should continue to be the force of District 9. Will they ever have two home playoff games and play in a District 9 championship game? Hard to say. We sure hope so, but we can't see the future. But one thing we know for sure is that the kids in our AC Valley marching band missed out on that issue. We can only hope the opportunities that are in these kids in the future. There's a solution to this problem, there's an easy solution to this problem, and the solution is a full marching band cooperative agreement between AC Valley and Union. Last year, the football game, I had a guy from Union's administration approach me and ask me if he could have a conversation with me about multiple things that happened between our two districts. The marching band co-op was one of those things that man wanted to talk about that thing, unfortunately, I had no answers for it. Before I asked for the opportunity to speak this evening and share my feelings on the situation, I did some homework and research, to make sure that I had all my docs in a row. Before I reached out to Dr. McDivitt about this, I wanted to make sure I knew for sure how the other side of the situation felt. So I reached out to the folks at Union. I had multiple conversations with Lisa Hummel, Union's band director. I also had a conversation with Mr. Kimmel, Union's district superintendent. I had heard rumors through the years and stories about Union offering on several occasions the openness, the willingness to do a full marching band cooperative agreement, but I was told each time, the answer was absolutely no. After my conversation with Mr. Kimmel and Ms. Hummel, those rumors and stories were confirmed. And that whole agreement has been reached in the past to at least allow these kids to play together in the stands during the games, but why not at halftime on the field? It makes absolutely no sense. Or you can take it even further to a parade or local events, veterans events, different things where these kids are able to play together. It makes absolutely no sense. I sat in the stands at every game this fall, at every event that the marching band participated in, watched and supported my daughter and her friends in the marching band. I've heard the heckling, the laughter, the snide remarks, and the questions about why our marching band is so small. I sat on the curb during the Autumn League Parade in Clarion, and listened to people standing around and making fun of how small our band is. They weren't making fun of the kids, they weren't making fun of the kids' talents, they weren't making fun of their efforts or the band instructor, they simply were poking fun at AC Valley. So once again, AC Valley was a laughingstock in this area, it's happened before. We've dealt with it for years with some of our athletic programs, and now we're seeing it in our marching band program. We stepped up and took care of the problem with our athletics and banded together with the Union School District, and now we're seeing lots of success in those programs. Now it's time for us to do the same with our marching band, give those kids the same opportunities as the other kids would give. In my conversation with Mr. Kimmel and Ms. Hummel, it was made very clear that the folks at Union are open to discussions to make that happen. They want what's best for the kids on both ends. And after my discussion with Mr. Victor and Dr. McDivitt, I think he and I are on the same page, and he feels the same way. After I confirmed the information with the Union leaders, I contacted and had a conversation with Dr. McDivitt. I shared my feelings with him. I shared what I had learned with the folks from the Union. I shared my disappointment in how the marching band efforts worked out this year for our kids. These kids should never be told they have to sit in the stands during the halftime show because the adults running the show can't get along. I understand the current coordination, I understand the current coordination of bands, which is how it's technically written in the contract, it's not a cooperative agreement, it's a coordination of bands. That agreement is signed through 2024. I'm not interning, but I do know that when both sides agree that something needs to change, that agreement can be nullified, and a new cooperative agreement could be put in place. This isn't going to happen overnight, but now's the time to do it. Let's get it done now, so when the summer of 2022 rolls around, these kids can be working together and be ready to be on the field next fall. It's not going to be easy, there's going to be hurt feelings, there's going to be unhappy individuals, but it's time for everybody to put their big boy pants on and do what's right for the kids. All this being said, if there's anything I can do to help make it happen, just let me know. I'm glad I do what I can, even if it means volunteering my wife to drive the band around to get the kids, to get the kids to practice. I'll leave you with this, a wise man once said, "If Carnet City and Montauk can suck it off, so can we." Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, for your input. Were there any other public participation this evening?
Kelly, I would suggest a board of input.
Yeah, would you state your name?
Chris McGee.
Okay, do it to Mike, please, so those who are listening from here.
Yeah, I've never related, never been to a game on my file. I'm Chris McGee, from Melton, PA, I'm also an assistant football coach here at AC Valley. I'm employed by AC Valley, but I coach the cooperative between Union and AC Valley. My reason for being here tonight is our football field has deteriorated to the point where it needs some attention done, needs some work done to it. Before games this year that we host here at AC Valley, talking to other coaching staffs, I mean, it's becoming a concern big while as far as with other coaches about our field being unlevel, there's patches in it, you know, there's wet spots here and there, even when it's your aisle, all summers, some parts of our field lay wet. Just, our field needs some work done to it, we need to put some, invest some money into our field, and look at, you know, uppainting or renovating the field, obviously not asking for a $2 million turf field, but we take it, but not asking for- But not asking for that, but asking to at least get it up to the point where, you know, we can, you know, be proud of what we have here. I mean, hosting two home playoff games this year, and neither one of them was at A C Valley, you know, as an alum this year, as a coach that's been here for a long time, that, that kind of stunk, you know, a little bit, not having that, not having a game here. And like Mike said, I mean, we guarantee we're going to do it again next year, be there again, who knows? But, you know, there wasn't even a consideration to have the game here when you compare the two fields of, you know, how are you going to host a D nine playoff game? So just asking if we can look into that, I know money's tight and everything, everybody's pockets are a little bit empty, but, you know, just look at that. I mean, like Mike said, if there's a anything that I can do to help, I mean, as far as chasing bids or estimates or finding guys or whatever we need to do, I mean, I'm I'd gladly be part of the solution, the rest of our staff would too. But, you know, we'd be really nice, it's getting to the point to where if it continues to keep deteriorating in the way that it has, especially the last few years, we may run into issues in the future with, who knows what? So we need to definitely look into that and I'm, you know, asking if we can just start having discussions about that moving forward with that. So thank you for your time.
Chris, is this an issue, are these issues, and I think this has been addressed at some point in time, that it creates a safety issue for the kids in the playoff field?
Yeah, I mean, at times it does, for sure, and like, the drives, the, like, if you rebook them on one, and now you can see, I mean, even spots in it, for sure, like, where somebody could roll in and act like, I didn't know Ray come up behind A C Valley and try to send it in my grade, I just saw it, I apologize. But, you know, Ray's also a coach there, but yes, it is, it's going to be a safety issue, and I, the wet spot on it, the, would be the north end up here by the retaining wall that lays wet all the time, and obviously needs some drainage or something put in there. And I'm not an expert when it comes to any of that stuff, to tell you what it needs, for sure. But new sod and leveled out and everything would be nice. The south end zone, I mean, it's almost three foot down now.
I think that's the last thing, I think that was the special two before.
It was like that when we played on it too, but it is definitely getting worse than what it has been in, you know, the past. And I, you know, I can't remember the last time that we put, invested money, I think that we put a scoreboard up in there, we did some bleachers to whatever, the last, whatever, but in the last thirty years, I've been around this program quite a bit, I don't remember. You know, the lights don't even point on the fields now because the poles are twisted, the center section of lights, I think we shine lights and I think the fights, you probably see the lights from their house whenever the game's going on, but, yeah, so I mean, there's definitely some attention there. I don't know how much money it would take, obviously, except we're not asking for, you know, we don't need them off that million dollar stadium, we take it. But, you know, if we could just look into, you know, seeing what we, estimates, if we can just start talking estimates and get, and see what we need, you know, see if, you know, we can participate or help in any way that we can, or do whatever we can to try to help it. Because, you know, we've got a young team coming back and not just on the success of it, there should be some more, more games played, you know. Really nice to have that here in our community, I think. Not that Union's not a great host over there, and they gladly welcome us, but, you know, it'd be nice, especially this year, we think we had two, you know. So I think that's the first time the D nine, they've ever hosted two, two home playoff games in the D nine, so that's something to be said, so it would be nice to have one of them here.
Would we even have thousands of the bands not being able to operate the concessions?
Oh, it would be, yeah, it'd be beautiful to watch both bands play on a nice field and the concessions and the revenue, I don't know how much money the school makes off of, I've never gone into that side of it, but we had pretty good attendance for the best of the playoff games earlier, so it would've been definitely nice to, you know, hear some fireworks going off in the valley here and stuff like that, you know, and generate some excitement around here, you know. So, and I'm sure it would help the local businesses too, I'm sure Foxburg and, you know, Dewey could have probably put a couple extra bucks in his pocket, you know. So, split some stakes or something. But, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just something going forward, I know the youth uses it, I'm sure we could go to them. I'm sure there has to be a way that we could all come together and try to find something there and try to find some money. At least look into doing it, but it definitely could, if it's not a safety concern yet, Fort Allegheny actually came to us and was almost not going to play today. We're almost going to talk to the officials, because it was in, I think the youth had played on it that week prior to that, and then it must've been wet when they played on it, it was, you know, the sod's not very good on it, there's not much our management crew can do to it, you know, obviously, just the way that it is, but you know, it's nice for what they have, that's for sure, but it definitely, you know, it would be nice to get it out there, but look into it at least anyways.
Maybe we could look at some, I don't know if there's any grants out there that would support it somewhere, or not?
Yeah, and I can definitely look into that too, I mean, I don't, I don't know that either, I mean, I did a basic due search, obviously, I'm no grant writer or expert like that, but there has to be, to me, there has to be money out there someplace, because there's a lot of rural districts that have very nice facilities. You go to rural valley, you go to West Shenokee and see that facility that they have down there, I mean, I mean, there has to be money out there somehow to get some of this stuff. I think it would just take some looking. And to your point, this is something that grades K through twelve could use for kids' education, so that might be an avenue for a possible grant to look for. The track is something that needs to be provided for the community as well, and phys ed classes, so I would think that a football field would also be something that that phys ed classes could make use of, for that reason, make a video, maybe find some grants.
I was thinking Highmark had something for sport. What can you check into that?
Yeah, I know Highmark has a lot of facilities down around like Cranberry and Hoxton area and stuff like that, I mean, the girls have played in a lot of Highmark facilities and stuff like that, come on through and stuff like that, so it, obviously, they there's money there to be put into facilities like that, for sure.
By the way, I thought it was your board.
Well, he probably made sure I didn't fall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sure. Please state the name, Chris McGee. Can you do it in the mic so those are looking carefully?
Chrissy Jager, thank you. I was also told that for the reason the championship bands weren't held also is because of both entrances being open. And the fact that the field over here, because the drive comes up a lot, Union has the fence around their football field. So that is a safety issue for P I N A. So that's something that might need to be looked into. But that was a major concern that's talked about at work. Because I work with a lot of football fans, they were ticked because of how much revenue can you make that works? Between concession, gate money, whatever else we can earn, something you want to do. Because I do the football thing, whatever you need. So that's something that maybe we can look at into the future. Also, there's a possibility of a lack of field. But that, this is one of the main reasons that I was told. As far as the marching band, you have to take into consideration time. Okay, it takes thirty minutes to get there. Takes them, so if you have an after-school practice, regardless which way, from three fifteen to five, takes them ten minutes to get down to the band room, ten minutes to load the van, and ten minutes to go on the bus because you have to make sure to get their stuff, go back in, get their stuff, and get on the bus. So that's an hour of practice wasted. Are you going to extend that time? Because then you're going to run into the problem. If you extend the time, parents are going to be mad because their kids are coming home at eight, nine o'clock because you can't just pick them up, like the football kids, the cheer kids, they have to come back on the bus and unload the trailer. Because, to be honest, how many parents are going to unload that trailer? I'm the only one that does that right now. Not even the people that help drive unload it. It is me. Who can make work early to drive that van three times a week? Or be on the bus with these kids three times a week? And one of the very few hands in the district that have that capability because I don't. There's only one week that I work in nine to five, and if I have to switch somebody a shift three times a week to do that, I don't think there could be very half of them. Respectfully, so because I would have to change them for another week to there. Have respect for that.
Now, my next question to you also is, Chrissy, can you pull the mic down, make some chat, because you can't hear yourselves?
My next question to you too is who's going to buy all brand new uniforms, brand new reindeer kits? So if you have this merger, there's a hundred and twenty kids, forty, and twenty guard members. Do you really want to know what the estimate of that is? Try $200,000. I'm not joking, Mike.
Thirty-two plus eight is forty, not a hundred.
You have to double that because you have to make sure you have the right size uniforms. And if anything should happen in those uniforms and they get broken, anything, you have extras. You have to get color guard, all new equipment, Mike. It runs over $200,000, or are you going to expect both of these school boards to pay $200,000 for everything?
Not for real.
I don't really think, I don't think it costs that much for a sport. It's just a uniform.
How much should it cost for football?
Okay, we're not going to argue here, Chrissy, you guys finish your statement. And I'm very grateful that you guys helped us pay for the brand new reindeer kits. Because that's a huge load off of what we really needed because ours are falling apart. And then what happens if the merger should disappear like it already did with Cranberry's ones? Are you guys going to repay to have everything done again? All brand new uniforms, all brand new reindeer kits, all brand new everything again? Because honestly, I don't think anybody can afford that if that should happen two years down the line, in this case. Because I really don't think how much longer we have to hold off or how much longer that, you know, if something should happen. Because if something does happen, then you guys are out money, they're out money. And this organization's going to only put so much toward it.
I think for your input, I think you'll take that into consideration. Is there anybody else for public participation? Okay? Okay, technically, we're supposed to keep public participation to five minutes per person, so if you can kind of follow that guideline, it would be helpful.
My name's Robin Croser, and I'm the head coach here at A C Valley for twenty-one years, and I've been working here for thirty-three. I'd just like to address the board about a concern I have in the elementary kitchen. As you know, we're providing free breakfast and lunch to all students during the COVID time. We've had a substantial rise in the participation over the last two school years because of this. The problem is that both schools have a very good breakfast program. The elementary's averaging between a hundred and seventy to two hundred bags, grab and go, and the high school has anywhere from sixty-five to eighty per day. That being said, one person in each building is responsible to get those bags filled with anywhere from four to seven items, depending on the menu. Up until today, I had help doing this. First, I had Toni, who works at the high school, she would come in for a half hour and help, and then she would go up to the high school. She was only beating twenty to thirty at that time, since her numbers are up. She doesn't have time to get hers breakfast ready before the kids come in off the bus. So then, as a board, you allowed us to have a three-hour person to help for the month of November, but today, I was the only one there to do it. I started at six forty-five and usually have, used to have the doors open between seven thirty and seven forty. Today, it was closer to seven forty-five. The last student went through between eight oh three and eight oh five, followed by my IU kids and the pre-k. We were doing grab and go and just keeping track of how many breakfasts I made and then subtracting the ones that were left to get my tolls for the day. Then Stacy went to a training, was told that the students have to enter their IDs to properly count it. So this slows the line down considerably, but we were getting the students through by eight o'clock. The problem I have is that I need to have all of my bags ready before I can open the doors and let the students come in to be able to move them pretty quickly. When I had help, we wouldn't fill all those bags and leave twenty or thirty that could be filled as needed by the second person working with me. If I did that now, it would have to stop the line until I could fill more bags and then return to the register. So we're only asking for some help until the end of the school year, while the students are still receiving a free meal.
Thanks, Robin. I believe you saw one other candidate. Could you please state your name?
Yes.
For the record.
Hi, my name's Jessica Baraztek, and I did the bidding rather than come here today, but I believe school board needs to be made some issues aware with your athletic trainer. Kevin's been your athletic trainer for several years. This year particularly, I've had a lot of issues with Kevin with unnecessary paperwork, making me take my children to the pediatricians for clearance that they didn't need clearances for. He is breaching HIPAA, he's talking to other staff and students about my children's health. He is, I love the transphobia. He's changing my medical documentation that I am turning into the school. My Section Eight, he changed three times. When I proved him wrong, and the first thing he changed, he changed it again to fit his agenda to post-credit my child being able to participate in sports. The most recent thing that Kevin has done is he has lost my daughter's emergency rescue inhaler and has not made anybody in this school aware she has asthma, and when she plays basketball, she has to have it or she will have an asthma attack.
Okay, now, before you continue, because this is a personnel issue, that you discussed that with the high school principal?
I have.
Okay.
And Mr. McDivitt.
Okay, so it really needs to be something that's discussed with them and the board, not in public key? Since it's just kind of a personal issue?
Well, I, I'm not the only person having issues with this employee, but it does seem to linger in your agenda.
That needs to be taken up with the administration.
Okay.
Okay, it's not really fair for us to bring this up here when the athletic trainer is in your department itself, so. I would suggest, I mean, I'm not saying you don't have an issue, I don't have, you need to really talk with the high school principal first and then we'll go through the chain of community, you know.
I have, and they have all my emails back and forth to Kevin verifying these names.
Okay, all right.
So, other than the inhaler, because I went over Kevin's head.
Okay. We'll have a discussion with the the high school principal and the superintendent and say something else.
Like I said, once I go out there to talk, he's on your agenda for substitute nurse slash teacher, it's something you need to be married, made aware of, because I've already contacted him here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public participation? Okay, we do have a presentation tonight from Dawn Irwin and the A C Valley baseball team, coaches.
Hi, first I'd like to introduce myself, my name's Dawn Irwin, I'm from Hamilton, I'm head baseball coach here at A C Valley. Two things I want to apologize for, one, I'm nowhere near prepared for, as Chris and Mike both are, I'm nowhere near, I'm not that type of person, so I want to apologize for that. Second, I want to apologize, I guess there was some miscommunication last month, you guys thought I was coming here last month, and when Mr. McDivitt, I spoke on the phone, Dr. McDivitt spoke, he thought it'd be best to come this month since it was a new group coming in, so I want to apologize to those that thought I was coming last, last month. I'm here to request approval to take the varsity baseball team to Orlando, Florida, to the S M Y World Sports, March nineteenth to twenty-sixth. Those of you who don't know, this would be our eighth or ninth, I forget which one it is, I believe it's our ninth, this would be our ninth trip down. Last couple of years, we've been, of course, with every other field trip, not able to do it because of COVID, we feel this year that we'll be able to go ahead and make the trip down. Basically, I don't have a presentation, I brought my presentation here to these three boys to voice their, what they want to say about, so I will be here for any questions if you guys have any. I think Max Lowry is going to be our speaker, there's our three seniors going to be Max Lowry, Steve Causey, and Gary Wilson, I guess Max pulled the short straw.
Yeah, I don't know. All right, yeah, I just want to say, this trip is a great experience, especially for the kids that are younger, the guys who haven't done it yet. For a lot of kids, it's their first time flying, first time doing an airport, and the first time being away from their parents for a ten-year time. And it's a great bonding experience. Whenever I get off, go off and play my freshman year, a lot of those guys, I, I, I knew them, but I wasn't great friends. By the time I got home, I, I trusted them and we're good friends, honestly. Um, and while we have some free range down there, Dewey has a good system, keeps it under control. And it, it's fun. It's really fun and it's good competition, good baseball down there for us to see and come back.
I've also had two of my assistants. Uh, Mike is one of the main coaches here for baseball and Coach Wickham is volunteer assistant about every program here. Uh, I don't know, do you want to speak on it? I'll just second what Max said about it being a good experience for the kids. One thing, you know, we typically fly Southwest Airlines. If you guys have flown Southwest, they're one of the more personal airlines. So the first thing Coach Irwin always does is alerts the flight attendants that we have half of the baseball team that's never flown before. So they make it fun for the kids and they pick on them and tell them what more bags are and all that stuff, you know, just keeps it entertaining. And they do, uh, Coach Irwin and his wife have a very well laid out agenda for the week. It's very detailed. Kids are on the sidewalk at 6:30 in the morning and we're on the bus by seven, that type of thing. It's, it's a great experience. Uh, fortunately, my son got to do it for four years and, uh, like Max said, those boys, they can, they come back as, as, still a phrase with the football team as a family. Uh, you know, they're, they're bonded. They don't have a choice because they're all living in the same room, 16 of them for seven days. But, uh, it's just a great experience and it's why we put, work all the effort we do to, to help make it happen. That's all we have. We're just asking for the approval to, to do it. Uh, unfortunately, we are behind the ball a little bit. We need to get moving on this to get our, uh, get our flights and everything and then get everything set up. The registration is actually over, uh, for the early bird, but I got permission from Florida to do it late to get the early bird registration pricing. So that is one thing that, uh, you guys, I sort of need to get it moving quickly, so.
Joe, yeah, I have a question about if we had to have an outbreak or, you know, something crazy like that. Do you have any kind of insurance or could there be a backup plan?
Yeah, Southwest, uh, we had to fight a little bit last, two years ago this happened, of course, and we had to back out of the trip. Uh, Southwest fought us a little bit, but we ended up getting, what, $18,800 gift cards? So we did get the money back that way. Uh, Florida fully refunded us 100%, so we didn't lose any money on it that way, so we're covered that way. Uh, we, we looked into the insurance thing and it wasn't worth what they were charging us to do it. Uh, but Florida is willing again to, if we do have another outbreak, a state mandate saying, you know, flying and going state to state, things like that. Uh, we, we will be able to back out, get our money back, and I'm sure Southwest will do the same again, get gift cards.
Dewey, what are your dates for deadlines?
March 19th to the 26th, Saturday to Saturday.
No, for the deadlines to register and all that stuff?
Well, it's over, uh, but I, I do have a relationship, like I said, this is our ninth year ago, the eighth or ninth year ago now. I spoke to them, told them we're trying to get in. But they said, basically, if I can let them know by the end of the, end of the two weeks, which would be next week, you know, no problem. So, I mean, it is something that is, you know, we need to get going as soon as possible.
Does this impact any kind of testing, Dr. Wick?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look at those dates, but I don't think so.
I looked into that and I don't know all the testing, but I looked into the different testing that you guys had that didn't show anything on the calendars or website or anything like that except one that you didn't look at. But like I said, there might be something that's not on there.
PSSA is usually in April now. Keystone started then.
Dewey, I just want you to kind of, um, talk to the board, especially the new members, maybe who are not familiar with the trip that you guys stayed. As far as the fact that this is a training opportunity, you do play games, so can you just talk about the, the amount of training and, you know, skills and drills type stuff that you guys go through there, games versus, you know, it's no secret that everybody, there's people in the public who have said, this is just a free vacation and it's a free for all down there. So can you just kind of put to rest maybe some of those concerns?
First, to the people that say it, I invite them to come with us and see what we, what we do there. So to those people, welcome, you know, come on, come on down with us and see what we do. Uh, normal day, we, like I said, and Mike said, 6:30, we're on the sidewalk, we're waiting for a bus, we're getting to the ESPN complex. And I do believe Jake went two years, uh, Cole, Cole went down a couple of years with us when we were doing it. Uh, so some of you guys know the background we have, but, uh, 6:30, we're up there on the sidewalk waiting on the bus, use the bus in there about 7:30, but we like to get there early. Uh, we get over to the complex. On a normal day, we're at ESPN from eight o'clock to about four o'clock, give or take. We're guaranteed two field day or two field sessions per day, so that's four hours of field time. And we're allowed one hour of batting practice time, plus twice a week, we're allowed to have training, which we've never really used per se that the, it's more of footwork, speed training, things like that. We use it more for, for the actual field time that we don't get up here during the spring. So, I mean, it's usually eight to, eight to four, we're at the complex doing baseball stuff, and then they're back to the rooms till five, getting showered up, and then from five o'clock to nine, 10, depending on what time the parks close. And I'm not going to lie, they get to go, they go to each park, uh, once or in their state, so they'll get to each park and that's their educational part of this trip. Uh, and they, like I said, they get to spend four or five hours at, at the park in the evenings, so, you know, it's just not, for those who think it's a, it's a vacation, like I said, you're welcome to come down with us. You know, I'll make sure you get a flight on ours and you're welcome to it. It, it's a very, very good trip for the kids. I mean, it's very educational, not only baseball, but, but life, life trips more, I mean, it's, it's very educational.
I have a question about students, so you're going to need to fundraise? Money's already.
Fund, no, there's, there's no shortage.
Fundraise between now and March?
No, it's not. The, the parents all pay for it. It's all, it's all raised through, through a fundraising organization.
The people that spend, the players and the coaches, or you?
We open it up to the parents, anybody who wants to go, yeah. Plus a trainer, plus a trainer, which, no, there's no expense due to the school of this at all. We paid everything for, for all the kids. There's nothing, there's no expense whatsoever. Just asking, they get out of school that week of time.
So is that going to be five school days or is that over Easter? I want to know.
No, it's five school days. Easter's late, I believe, this year.
Okay, any other questions?
From the board?
Okay, thank you.
And Kelly, we do have another presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jordan. He does have some students and he's going to talk a little bit about some comprehensive plans.
One of the tasks that I'm, uh, trying to complete this year is the high school comprehensive plan. For those of you that aren't familiar with that, that's really, uh, building up a vision for the next couple of years of how we're going to do, uh, certain things. From instruction, culture, uh, to preparing for testing, things like that, and it requires a lot of input. Uh, as I began to, uh, go through that task, I realized that it's, I'm really out of my league when it comes to certain things. And, uh, so part of what I want to do is I want to introduce these students, uh, who will work with me, uh, to develop some surveys, be able to get information from students, uh, to give me ideas of how to connect with, uh, parents and make it easy for them to give me input uh, so that I can, uh, build the foundational piece of that, uh, high school comprehensive plan. I'm also going to ask these students to apply, uh, to be the board representatives, uh, for the upcoming school year. It's been difficult for me to get those students. A lot of students can't dedicate the time, uh, to be able to work with me or to come to board meetings. And, uh, these three have shown interest and said that they would be willing to do that. And so, if you don't mind, introduce who you are in a brief.
My name is Drew Wickham and I'm in eleventh. Hello, my name is Grace Farlet and I'm in tenth grade.
Hello, my name is Kaden Danny. I'm in the seventh grade.
Kelly, it's very difficult to hear back here, so we'll either even go to the, to the podium or you guys.
You guys like to go up to the podium again? That way, those at home can hear what you're saying. Very helpful. Thanks, Ken.
Hello, my name is Drew Wickham and I'm in eleventh grade.
Hello, my name is Grace Farlet and I'm in tenth grade.
Hello, my name is Kaden Danny and I'm in the seventh grade.
And that's my piece for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we've gotten through all the presentations. Let's look at the consent agenda. Are there any items you would like pulled from the consent agenda to vote on separately? Okay, not seeing any. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
What's your new proof?
Corey Sherman made a motion and Diane Page with a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Okay, finance and purchase. Corey will let me do that tonight, please.
Handle that?
All right, letter A, consideration to approve Maple Valley Farms as a food service supplier on a temporary, as needed basis. Per correspondence dated November 5th, 2021, as attached, so moved.
That was Diane Page that seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
All right, letter B, consideration to approve purchasing a school van using ARB SIR3 grant money to transport students to school, athletic events, appointment programs, and court, so moved.
We are going to, I think what we're going to have to do at this point is table that.
Yes, or postpone it.
Or postpone it because we can't find any vans.
Or can you, speaking of it on that behalf, I explained to the board, but it's, um, get us playing the one on one.
Fleet program, government fleet program, we buy vehicles through, uh, this year, opens up late in September and closes in October. They fill it in less than a month, so they're not going to be building any vans this year. So because of the parts shortages and like that, they, they killed all the orders and no longer, no, not taking any more.
And Mark, I explained that we need a nine-passed your van pulled and drove. Are there other manufacturers that produce publicly out there?
Uh, none as of right now. I mean, smaller vehicles, you know, like just smaller, like mini vans, like that are being produced. As a ten-passed your van, the maximum we can do is school. They're not being produced right now. They can notify me when they, when it opens back up again, as of right now, so.
And we do have the SIR money available until 2024. So as soon as the van can come back up, uh, I will be working hard on the revises as much as.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, so do we need to vote this again?
Uh, I think if we voted to postpone it, we'll get fine and we'll send revises as much as we can.
Okay. So Corey, would you like to change that and say that we're going to postpone that until IDs become available?
Yep. Do that. All right, letter B, consideration to postpone approving the purchase of a new school van using ARB SIR3 grant money to transport students to school, athletic events, appointment programs, and court, so moved.
Okay, we have settled. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anybody need to abstain? All right, we're good. All right, Carrie, you want to do personnel?
Sure. Letter A, consideration to retroactively approve the request from employee number 131 to use Thursday, November 11th, 2021 as unpaid leave, so moved.
Okay. The motion is seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Who did the second on that, Kelly?
I, I did, Brady.
Brady did.
Brady, okay, thank you.
Letter B, consideration to retroactively approve the request from employee number 119 to use Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, Wednesday, November 24th, 2021, as unpaid leave, and to also approve Friday, December 10th, 2021, as unpaid leave, so moved.
Second.
That was seconded by Brady. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter C, consideration to retroactively approve the request from employee number 287 to use Wednesday, November 10th, 2021, and Wednesday, December 23rd, 2021, each as unpaid leave, so moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter D, consideration to retroactively approve the request from employee number 133 to use Friday, November 5th, 2021, as unpaid leave, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter E, consideration to retroactively approve the request from employee number 382 to use Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, as unpaid leave, so moved.
Okay, then moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter F, consideration to retroactively approve the requests from employee number 137 to use the following days as unpaid leave. October 22nd, 2021, November 12th, 2021, and Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, and to also approve Monday, December 6th, 2021, as unpaid leave, so moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter G, consideration to retroactively approve the request from employee number 389 to use Thursday, November 18th, 2021, as unpaid leave, so moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter H, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as assistant junior high boys' basketball coach from John Kaufman, as attached, so moved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, before we do letter I, this is another one that we need to postpone. Uh, because we need to follow, the position was not opened up for the 10-day, um, posting that has to be done according to the contract. So we need to postpone this until that gets followed and then hopefully we can do the rest of the next one.
Yeah, and then you can make a motion to postpone this, I think.
Okay.
Thanks.
So letter I, we are going to, um, say consideration, uh, motion to, consideration to higher pay both pennies, postponing this decision, right? On receipt of all appropriate documentation as assistant junior high boys' basketball coach for the 2021, 2022 season at a supplemental salary, $1,521, once again, to postpone this. So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Was that you? Brady? Okay, Brady seconded that. Any discussion? Again, the reason we're postponing it is because it has to be according to the contract. They got to post it internally for 10 days. And then hopefully, you know, go further, so. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So then we will take consideration to advertise for the vacated assistant junior high boys' basketball coach. So moved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter J, consideration to accept the letter of resignation as assistant junior high volleyball coach from Valerie Snyder as attached, so moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter K, consideration to advertise for the vacated assistant junior high volleyball coach position, so moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Letter L, consideration to accept the letter of resignation from Dave Pinman as head boys track and field coach as attached, so moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Letter M, consideration to advertise for the vacated head boys track and field coach, so moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter N, consideration to approve the request from employee number 100 to utilize sick days concurrent with FMLA leave as needed, so moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstentions, motion carries.
Letter O, consideration to approve the temporary ARP SR3 grant-funded K-12 counselor, school counselor job description as attached, so moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Do we have a recommendation?
We're recommending Courtney Bryce to be hired as the temporary school counselor. That would be mastered, one pro rated from March 13 until the end of September.
All right, letter P, consideration to approve hiring Courtney Bryce as the temporary ARP SR3 grant-funded K-12 school counselor beginning December 16, 2021, for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year and the 2022, 2023 school year. The salary for the remainder of the 2021, 22 school year will be pro rated at $23,855.96. This position is contingent on receipt of grant funds, so moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I'm kind of struggling with this position, David, so can you kind of just justify the need for another full-time? I know that when we talked about it last month, you said we are required by the grant to spend a certain amount of money on the social emotional, you know, issues relating to the COVID pandemic. So can you kind of just reinforce that need?
Sure, I'll get started and I'm sure Dr. Gordon, Mrs. Sherman can help out as well. Working with the students, we have to take care of their social emotional wellbeing before getting at them in progress. And within our transition back into the house of school, we've been seeing more and more concerted behaviors with the students. We do have social worker here, we have school counselors, and we thought adding another school counselor can have some continuity. We want to be elementary and high school, we can provide more, not only large groups, but also small group counseling and support the administration with their academic progress. This was part of the state overseeing back that hit receives as well additional support for the social emotional part of the learning process. And I'm sure Lori and Bill will provide more in the middle of that, but there's more and more needs up the state each and every day. It's gonna take some time and additional support. The teachers are working very diligently to focus on these academic needs, are doing as much as they can. We brought in professionals from the intervening unit to help the staff with various different classroom techniques and behavioral management strategies. And it's a very difficult time right now, we thought an additional counselor could really support that aspect of it. And Bill or Lori, would you like to follow me up?
Steve, for me, elementary school, I know that we have more kids than ever that are individual counseling services. We have some social worker completely maxed out, she doesn't have spots left. Lori is trying to do classroom counseling sessions that is part of her normal pre-COVID job that she does in the test programs with our different grade levels. And just have those programs to handle the, you know, things that count up with the people's students. Lori was out this week and I was doing the best plan counselor, but I had several kids that teachers called me and that means that they need to see someone. I think what you're not invested in, you don't realize how effective some of these kids are, some of the situations they were in, when they have to be alone, but it's all that's back to them. It's just incredible to me, walking through that, that's a social labor issue. I mean, there's definitely learning loss academically that we are working hard to recover from, but the social emotional aspect is huge as well.
And I think for me at the high school, the learning loss is a piece that you wouldn't think that counselor would have anything to do with that. But when a student cannot meet the current requirements in the classroom because they've lost so much as far as skills, they really resort to two things. They either daydream or try to sleep or do whatever to avoid the task, or they turn into a behavior problem. Because they don't want to do the hard work that's expected of them, simply because they don't have the skill base to do that. I've identified at least four kids that that is specifically the reason that my team has identified them being behavior problems in classes. And becoming a behavior problem to the point that my teachers are stressed out and it's beyond their skill level. So we need that extra help to be able to, you know, provide an academic program that can meet the needs of those kids. And I need a guidance counselor that can help do that, work with teachers, try to find out what's appropriate for those kids and meet those needs. Along with that, the graduation requirements, as I've discussed with the board prior, is so convoluted now with multiple pathways. And students and families are struggling to understand what their kid needs to do to be able to graduate according to the state. Mrs. Logan, myself, we were gonna call one parent today that has an extremely difficult position, 10th and 11th grader that will graduate under that rule next year. But because of another student issue, a student that had run away from home and family issues, we had to deal with that all the time and never had the time to even make that phone call. Those are the things that you think that that's anomaly, it's not, it happens all the time. And it's, I think that, you know, the requirement, the time requirement to be able to fix some of these problems is just stressing everybody out. And I think that that extra guidance counselor wouldn't be able to relieve some of that.
Where, Lori, Minnie, what are their, you know, how, you know, they backing this?
Yeah, I know, we're, another full-time staff. In talking to Lori, she's foreseeing using the new person to help do some of that, this classroom counseling program that she's not been able to get to. So that those are those things that happen, one doesn't have to be, they're not, they don't, they don't, they don't. This classroom program is extremely important. Lori goes out and the teachers ask, would you like to, I would like to, tries to fill them as she can, but they decide to, they're coming back for her now for two years. She's done a few programs, but you know, Phil said, we'll just put down fires everywhere.
And Carrie, also remember that this is grant money that can actually help save the district money. And what we're trying to do with this position is meet the needs of the students before they become problematic, whether it's behavioral or academic in nature. And if we can't maintain the students here, we always have to send them out to a program outside of the district. And they're not with our teachers, they're not staff, they cost additional money for unlimited transportation, but the cost of that program, that cost could be anywhere between $50,000 and $100,000 per student. So we're looking at one permanent position.
Are you guys planning on splitting it just as needed between the buildings or are they gonna be here certain times of the day, the high school's every time?
We'll have to work on it, schedule, we already talked about that. There's some particular needs that are down here that we'll have to carve out some time, but we're hoping to have a 50/50 split as far as half days, full days, we have to figure that out.
So you're anticipating this position will be mainly spent with students? Not doing paperwork or scheduling or all of this, this person's gonna be used as a support person for student needs?
Yes, absolutely.
Did we lose somebody?
Megan, I'm still here.
Okay.
Oh, Megan just walked in, we're good.
Wow, Megan, that was a fast switch. Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, question, Kelly, question, yeah, students, we're gonna do.
Okay. Any other questions? I think, I know one of the things was, could this be a part-time position and still give you the coverage you need?
So there's a lot of, yes.
I mean, if you make it a part-time person, that means you want to really get a quarter person down here and a quarter person up at the high school. I just don't think that that would be, it'd be always, I'd run out of zeros when that were, myself.
What about one day up there, one day down here?
Yeah, I mean, I might work, you know, we're trying to figure out what that split is and I'm sure the schedule will depend as well down as well, no one ever made it on academic classes. And the counselor may move absolutely abruptly.
Is that what you meant, Diane, or you just meant like a part-time? If it was a part-time person, maybe they could work up there one day and the next day here. Like you only have one or any day. Would that be helpful?
I mean, you better knock that shit on it. Just pop it, drop the bat.
That's how our social worker is now, and you know, Dave doesn't go after, we feel it, absolutely. And actually, she goes, oh, hey, part-time, she is here, and just me and Lori down here. I mean, there's other people that help us out, whatever.
Lori, it's impossible to hear you, you gotta speak up, sorry.
I did not realize how much good you're over here to that when you go over there.
I don't remember what I said. You said, with, on days, oh, the day that we don't have a social worker, like, we really feel that, she's only here part-time. And then part-time, she's here, she's a textbook, she's down here, so we're missing that. You know, I just, I know Lori and I are trying to keep up, I'm sure Bill and Minnie are trying to keep up with all the needs, it's been very overwhelming.
And also, keep in mind, we have a fantastic highly qualified in-house applicant who Mark talked about in the interview and she's been an employee for the past year. This person is gonna hit the ground running, already got plans and really was able to articulate the needs that we have in the district and have a plan for us to put in place.
So then will we have to advertise for her position?
We'll have to fill her current position, that's correct.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so we moved, we moved and seconded this, we'll be ready to vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Letter Q, consideration to approve the temporary ARP SR3 grant-funded K-7 through 12, sorry, grade math coach job description as attached, so moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter R, consideration to approve transferring Mary Rothman to a temporary ARP SR3 grant-funded 7th through 12 grad, grade math coach for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year, effective date to be determined for the 2022, 2023 school year. This position is contingent on receipt of grant funds, so moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any abstentions? Right, motion carries.
Letter S, consideration to approve the memorandum of agreement, temporary math coach position with the ACVEA as attached, so moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
And the MOA has just moved that, moved Mary back into her current position with the grant field away and the math coach is no longer in the place.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter T, consideration to approve advertising for a temporary 7th through 12 grad math teacher based on grant funding for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year and continuing for the 2022, 2023 school year, so moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter U, consideration to approve temporarily transferring Crystal Long from a part-time child-specific aide to a full-time child-specific aide for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year, effective December 2, 2021, and for the 2022, 2023 school year. This temporary full-time position contingent on receipt of grant funds will be paid using our ARP SR3 grant money and is to help support student achievement and social emotional learning, so moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Can somebody tell me what this position is and what Crystal's qualifications are for this position?
We could say that something for. Yeah, it's a, she's a student aide, so, um, students who require extra assistance in either ELA or math. She's in their classrooms, so she goes to get her classroom, Crystal is mostly first and second grade, so she goes to the classroom with those students and assist them for the portion of academic days. And the next one is the same, like, chocolate.
Lori, in all we're doing is moving them to full-time, being a professional.
Part-time. Is this to replace, you're moving these part-time to full-time to replace the one that we hired?
No, not necessarily, this is just to provide additional support for the students and teachers down here at the elementary. As we, again, like we've been talking all evening, additional support from staff, which is going to be most important, you have to get a lot of the ASR grant. Andrea, Carrie and I, we're from the narrative, there's a number of programs you can get, but we thought, with the feedback that we have received, talking to teachers, that the best bang for the bucks is moving these part-time employees. And again, they're the most senior in the full-time employees contingent on the grant.
So they're not working with one specific student, they're working with multiple students?
It depends, there are child-specific aides working with one specific student, depending on their particular need. And then there are aides who could be assigned to a grade or a class.
And these, those two positions could be assigned, right, they're not just the ones aides who are not specific child.
And I'll be working with Lori and the special education director to make sure we utilize their extra time schedule.
I have a question.
Sure.
So will they move these aides to full-time?
Yes.
Do they then receive benefits?
Yes, they'd be eligible for the benefits.
Just until the grant money is done and then they go back.
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter B, consideration to approve temporarily transferring Shonda Ritchie from a part-time child-specific aide to a full-time child-specific aide for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year, effective December 2, 2021, and for the 2022, 2023 school year. This temporary full-time position contingent on receipt of grant funds will be paid using ARP SR3 grant money and it is to help support student achievement, social, social emotional learning, so moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter W, consideration to approve a stipend of $1,000 to carry long-go federal programs coordinator and Andrew Stewart, business manager, using the ARP SR3 grant funds. This stipend will be for the additional time spent outside of the regular workday on the SR1, SR2, and ARP SR3 grant budgets, narratives, equipment labeling and tracking. quarterly reporting, end-of-year reporting, and budget adjustments. This stipend will be provided for the 2021-2022, 2022-2023, and 2023-2024 school years. This stipend is contingent on receipt of grant funds, so move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? New board members, do you understand what we're talking about when we talk about the ARP SR3? Okay. It's grant money, but it's, it's from the federal government. It's part of the monies that are supplying to schools to help support us through the COVID issues. There's been, this is the third grant, and this is the biggest one, I think, today, correct, David?
Correct. And I think it's a total of $1.5 million that will spend for the remaining portion of this year, the following year, and then the 23, 24 school years will be the end of that grant.
So David and Andrea and the principals have been working for a while to develop the best way that we want to spend this money to support the district. So that's where all these motions are coming from. Okay? Any other discussion? All right, I think I'm at four. We need to get that correct because it wasn't in place. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Letter X, consideration to approve hiring the following AC Valley students, Malia Connor, Bella Hunt, Max Lowry, and Mackenzie Cherry to be part of the Keystone Miles AmeriCorps program. Three hundred hours per student for the total, reporting total payment of $1,200 per student beginning December 16th, 2021, through June 30th, 2022. These positions are temporary ARP SR3 grant funded, and students, tutor elementary students to help combat learning loss and support social emotional learning, so move.
Okay, so we moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If you remember, we had an AmeriCorps, let's say, person or leader or chairperson here with the last month or two months ago discussing.
I think it's two workshops.
Yeah, how this, how these students could be benefited, supported our students in their educational process.
And Joyce Claus Dick from Keystone Miles will be working with Julie Raybuck, and we're already coordinating with Richmond down here about these students. Since then, they're always, you've got the high school students with the opportunity to earn a little or sarcastic towards a higher education, but also help to tutor some of the students down here at the elementary as well.
So it sounds like it's going to be a very good idea, support for the students, so. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks, Carrie, for doing all that.
We can give you two more than we need.
I'm good.
Okay, Tammy, would you do instructional services, please?
Yeah. Sure. Elementary. Well, I don't have too much, because we were just here recently. I've really not had a lot of school since then, but just a reminder that tomorrow, December 2nd, quarter two progress reports come out already. And on December 10th, we will be voting our annual Christmas concert. We're not able to have last year, so we're anxious to be able to get back to that and invite everybody to come and watch that. Our first show is December 10th at 9:30, and those would be students whose names end in A through L. Their families are welcome to attend. And at 1 o'clock, families with, or students whose last name ends with M through Z, their families are asked to attend at 1 o'clock. Of course, all those attending at first, it will be required to be passed when they enter the building. We will also be live streaming it, so both shows will be available for live stream on the website. That's all I have.
Lori, will that be in the high school?
It will be in the high school, I'm sure. Yes.
Thank you. Seconded, great floor.
I actually do not have anything to add since we were here recently. But if anybody has any questions about the senior project that's on your agenda for tonight, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions. I know I've talked for years, talked about it quite a bit.
Okay, so we need to go ahead with this motion. Consideration to approve the senior projects overview as presented by Dr. Jordan at the November 15th, 2021 voting meeting as attached, so move.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussions or questions for Mr. Jordan? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Federal programs required.
Auntie, you don't have anything to say for federal programs or districts report? They were all pretty much our motions we've been working on.
And we have enrollment numbers.
Carrie, you're back.
And we have a place report tonight.
I did sixteen perimeter checks, sixteen inside checks, sixteen lunch details, two pork and lawn checks, eight arrival details, eight dismissal. Assisted the administration four times, attended one training, camera check, I checked them at least sixteen times. Foot patrol, I did forty-eight foot patrols, one fire door, traffic eight times, and two meetings and one, uh, threat assessment we had.
Thank you, Dave. And Dave's been doing a lot of work with the safety committee as well. Friday, the peaceful day, and myself are going to go around working with students and the teachers and talk about practical ways of dealing with any kind of crisis that we may have here on campus. Talk a little bit about our own safety and security, but also provide students and staff with various ideas on how to keep themselves safe. So good job, Dave.
Thank you. Diane, can you do policy?
Consideration to approve second reading of policy number 717. Sorry, that one's as attached, so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
B, consideration to approve the second reading of policy number 209.1, headless bed bugs leads as attached, so move.
Second, moved and seconded. Any discussion? I know you're looking like, what do we have to talk about? It's not a very interesting, or very nice subject, but policy we need to have in place, so. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we have a maintenance report.
Like we're here a couple weeks ago. Something, something major at the elementary today. Yeah, the loading box back there, maybe over that door broke off and broke up inside it. It's closed, it's closed now, but not open. We got overhead door company in front of us too, because of the next day or so, it gets mixed up. There's a loading box. Hand trucking. That's all.
Thanks, Mark. Megan, would you do transportation in this lane for us? We'll give the new board members a rest this week, or this month. Next month we'll be involved in all these.
Letter A, consideration to approve the ACV transportation procedural guide for the 2021-2022 year, last updated on September 9th, 2020, as attached, so move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Okay, last updated date is not correct because I updated it last month. So I have to look and see what that date was. I must not, but it, when I sent it to T M, I must not have updated that date. So it should be November something, 2021, or this last update. I recommend that change to give it to T M.
T M, did you hear, Lori?
I did hear that, yeah. I was like that from her.
She will give you the updated date.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Miss Melanius, A, we have a career center report.
Uh, yeah, there wasn't much advertising for a auto technology instructor right now. Another long term stop for that position, and then still discussing the subsidy money. So I'll look at, I'll do that next year. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. A copy of the minutes from the November twenty-two, November 22nd, 2021, going operating committee meeting, our patch, will be approved at the December 21st, 2021 meeting. With letter B, we have an IU report. Probably not because. And then C, any correspondence?
No.
F, no, our, yeah, technology committee?
We have that.
Okay. G, athletic committee update. Underneath that, we have a consideration here to approve the request of the AC Valley baseball team slash John Irwin to attend the ESPN Wide World of Sports Baseball Spring Training in Orlando, Florida for March 19th through the 26th, 2022, as attached, so move. Second.
Okay, so we moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay?
Who seconded that?
I did. Carrie.
Carrie, yeah.
Carrie, who seconded?
Okay, my only question is, John, are you guys, I mean, you have a policy in place if COVID stops everything, and you're sure you'll get your money back and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, and one abstention?
Oh, I should probably extend to, to higher kids on that trip, so I should probably.
Okay, so we have two abstentions, T M.
Okay.
Carrie and Eric.
Carrie and Eric suddenly.
Kelly, just a minute.
And there should be abstentions for them in that poll, whether they're there as a meeting room or not.
Okay.
So I don't have, I don't have to say.
Because it's part of a larger group that works about their child specifically, then they would have to obtain, but because it's part of a larger group, they don't have to.
I'm good.
Okay. So we don't have any abstentions.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, A, motion carries. Okay, we're good with that.
All right, and no finance today, so I'm done.
Okay. Um, any old business? Any new business?
If we do want to advertise for a part-time temporary cafeteria worker till the end of the school year, this is probably going to be a perfect place to put that down.
That's what I had written down. And also, do we not need to make a motion to add student representatives as the board representatives?
I need to review the policy to see if we have in there two student reps or three, and we'll, we should probably table that till about January, unless we add all three. I just have to look at the policy.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I don't know if we put a limit on that or not.
I thought that we said we had a junior and senior in the past. We could also modify the policy.
Okay.
We could do both, like a junior.
I looked at the board policy. It does have the number two, but it can be a sophomore, junior, or a senior. And it doesn't say we can't have an alternate also.
Okay, so was that your thought too, with an alternate?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I mean, if everybody is fine with that tonight, I think we should get them on board in January if they're willing to step up to the plate here and support students with boards.
Not every meeting's two hours or forty-five minutes.
And sometimes for longer, no.
They told us that once too.
Okay, so then we need, we're looking at two motions. If you are interested, one is for adding a cafeteria, part-time cafeteria employee for the remainder of the year. And the other would be to add student reps to the board starting in January.
I'll make a motion to hire a part-time cafeteria worker for the remainder of the year.
I'll second that.
Okay, we need to post that first. So we need to post. Yes, our first motion will be posted.
I will make a motion that we advertise for a part-time cafeteria worker for the remainder of the year.
I will second that.
All right. So all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And we need a motion to add our student reps.
I make a motion and you add some student reps to the board.
Okay?
Okay.
Seconded. Eric seconded, okay? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Kelly, I have a quick question for you on that part-time position. Do you have about hours or what?
That will be. Three hours for me.
Three hours, so thanks.
Okay, anything else, T M?
No, I was thinking, so thank you all for helping me.
Sure. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm going to adjourn.
Everybody's motion. Okay, did you get that, T M?
Um, no.
Diane made the first motion, and Megan seconded.
Good, now.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna, the board is going to break out for an executive session now. It's time for personnel.